Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for these administrators. Thank you for our teachers. Thank you for all the blessings you have given us and our children. Bless his, bless his parish and bless his administration, Lord. And Lord, thank you for all the blessings you've given us and give us wisdom and understanding in all decisions we make. In Christ's name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Castle, Johnny Fallon.
All right, item A is executive meeting report.
Went through all the checks. Everything was in order. Sales taxes are down again this month. This is, I guess, what? Fourth out of the five months that it's been down and hopefully they'll come on back up. So we're gonna need to see.
Any question? Thank you, Randy. Item B is review and vote on approval of this December 12th, 2024 board meeting minutes.
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
All in favor, say aye. All right, item C is recognize Lily Willis as the December Employee of the Month. Ms. Freeman?
Thank you, Ms. President. Good evening, everybody. And I get to brag on one of your very own tonight. I have some very own tonight. I have some wonderful words to say about Ms. Lily. Had a moment to visit with her before we leave. Lily Willis has been employed as cafeteria technician for the past eight years. During this time, Lily has proven to be a very dedicated, fairly missed his work and wow, that's a loyal employee. She rarely misses work. I will say that again. She rarely misses work and has even willingly transferred to other cafeteria locations. And her coworkers have a few things to say about her. Lily is presently serving students at Union Central Elmeri. And her coworkers have a few things to say about her. Lily is a loyal, dependable, she finds a way to make us feel special whenever she gets out of the opportunity. She's just good to the people she works with, but also another coworker said, I am so thankful to have Lily. She is such an amazing coworker. She is a true blessing to us in many ways besides work. She is such a hardworking technician and a key part of our trio. I'm so blessed to have her as my coworker. I could not do it without her. I feel she truly deserves this award because of her hard work and dedication to serving the children and the staff with a smile every day. She makes work fun while also getting the work done, and I couldn't ask for anyone better on the floor with me. So tonight I present to you your January 2025 Caldwell Parish School Board Employee of the Month, Ms. Lily Willis, for her dedication and commitment to her community, her schools, and her children. Proudly sponsored by Pelican Benefit Advisors, Ms. Lily Willis. You all have to. We say congratulations, we're proud.
I miss those cafeteria lunches.
All right, item D is recognize AJ Maxwell, Class 3A Composite All-State Academic Student.
AJ, you coming through? And I have asked Coach Ed to present his certificate and to say a few things about AJ. But don't trip, please.
So, I had the distinct honor of working with AJ for two years in the football field. It has been an honor. We could talk for a long time about AJ if we wanted to. I had to write things down. My wife always said, write things down so I'll stay up, stay on task. So we'll try to do that. Football field and also in the classroom. Classroom really is what's going to take him farther than anything else, which we're very proud of. This is a true testament of his dedication and discipline. Like I said, he was named the Academic All-American, honor bestowed upon student athletes who achieved a high GPA, which was a 4.0. This solidifies you as a role model to our future student athletes, and we appreciate that. So keep that with high regards. This all goes back to show of his dedication, his perseverance, and his commitment to excellence. All things will help lead you further in life, AJ. Congratulations, Sean.
Say, AJ. AJ, I'm almost certain you're better than your dad. I just want to put that on the record. Jason has a tendency to brag.
In the classroom especially.
Good job, man.
Alright, Coach Ed, let's get one more with y'all. I called you Blingy to dance when you get there.
I won't get you to fly. We'll get to do that.
Alright, you ready? One, two, three. Alright.
Hey, Kaylee, can you get one of those down?
Yeah, you wanna tell them something?
Then if you get up there with it.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't see Mom, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Your baby look on my shoulder like that ten years ago.
Item E is recognize JAG teachers Justin Prem and Stacy Morgan and receive update on JAG program.
So I'll, I'll just kind of start by the last time that Ms. Wiley mentioned at the board meeting about the JAG program, stuff the board members asked. We would like to recognize the JAG teachers and let them come in and kind of give an update about what they are doing. So, there you go.
If you want to play that, hit the loop button at the bottom. I just quit some pictures.
This is the loop button right here?
Yes, ma'am. I, I just put this together about thirty minutes ago. I never, I never tell my boss, Miss Stilson, no. I always tell her yes. So likewise, usually if I ask her to do something, she usually tells me, yes, you can do that. So, whenever they asked me a few years back to do JAG, I really didn't want to do it because I didn't know what it was about. It's been the best class I've ever taught. I've taught a lot of people in this room, either kids or grandkids. A lot of you, I looked around, it was about eight or nine of you. And so I'm really excited about that. When we first took over JAG, it was kind of designated for kids that had a lot of in-home barriers. And when I got to talk to my supervisors, both at the state level and locally, we realized that a lot of our kids in Caldwell Parish have a ton of barriers. Whether they come from rich families, well, middle-class families or poor families, and race wasn't a part of that either. And so it's been really, really exciting for me to get to work with them one-on-one. I wrote some notes, kind of like Coach Ed, because if I didn't, I'd have a clue where I was at. My school year kind of starts off as a misconception. JAG kind of does for both me and Ms. Stacy Morgan over here. We have to do one-on-one interviews with JAG kids, trying to figure out what their life's all about. And I'm gonna be honest with you, when they're over with, we have no clue what their life's about. We spend the next eight to nine months really figuring out everything about them. By the time they leave us, they're a part of my family. We do everything from community service to fun activities that you'll see in some of these pictures. We go out and do field trips at local businesses, from everything from Spotted Dog, Duke's Hardware, Holland Bank. We go around a lot of different places. We really, really, really take it upon ourselves to adopt our local parks. We do a lot of park cleanups from Brownville all the way across the river, all the way to the ballpark, to down behind Columbia Elementary, down by the boat grounds, Grayson, Clark's. We've done them all, okay? And that's all a testament to my principle allowing us to go and do that. It does help that I have a CDL, so that's definitely a benefit for sure. You probably even see my kids on here building things. We just got through building Gaga ball pits for our location in Central. It's been too wet to go over to Central to place those in any other areas yet. We're gonna have them put over there. My kids built them. You can see a finished product there. They did all this, the measuring, the cutting. Yeah, let's not talk about that. We had to go back and cut some things. We, we've had a lot of guest speakers and stuff throughout the year. Some of the ones that you guys will see right here, they actually came to my class today. These are the couple that's traveling America. Somebody called me last night at eight o'clock and was like, hey, these people want to come to your class. And I don't tell people no. So I was like, yeah, sure, why not? And so we made that happen. It was a good time. And I do want to speak about our high school program. It is way better now than it's ever been since I've been here. Ms. Stacy has taken that program over. It was not good at all. It's going really well right now, okay? And I know that you guys don't understand that, but whenever you have to track down high school kids to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, it's a lot different than just telling them to make their bed and pick up their clothes, okay? JAG has a lot of paperwork, a lot of business, and Ms. Stacy has done a really good job with that. A couple of other things I want to highlight. We spent a lot of time helping those kids figure out who they are as individuals. Teach them to have dreams, figure out what their goals are, figure out what characteristics they have that make them beneficial to the workforce later on in life. And then we go into actually looking into their careers that they want to go into. We actually had eighteen junior high kids actually participate in job interviews today, and they did absolutely phenomenal. I have to give them a round of applause for that. They gave themselves a round of applause because I have sat in and job interviews and watched adults not do as good as they did. And so that's a testament. When you see an eleven-year-old walk into a job interview with confidence, it's a big deal to me. And so I love that. I think it's amazing. One of the things I really want to speak on that we just did before we got off Christmas break was we actually adopted the preschool. And we gave a toy to every single kid that was at the preschool. All my JAG kids went over there and handed those out. And so that was a big deal for us. Our mission behind that was that some of those kids don't need Christmas presents. So, just a little snapshot. I can't even come together and bring all the things that we do in JAG. But like I said, it's because of the freedom that I have in that class that we get to do a lot of fun things that I tell them all the time, don't behave on your math teachers. They just don't have the benefit to be able to do all the things that we do. So I'm gonna let Ms. Stacy.
Just one question. With regards to eye contact, superintendent and I, we talked about this. Culturally, there's a difference between a kid that comes from my neck of the woods with eye contact versus, you know, other nationalities. Do you guys kind of focus on some of those unforeseen things that are never talked about? Because that helps the kid as they grow up because they have to be developed, get developed. So exposure to certain things mean a lot.
So leading into our unit that we're doing right now for job interviews, we spend a lot of time talking about communication. And we talk about the fact that about eighty-five, maybe plus percentage of all communication is non-verbal. So we definitely talk about eye contact, body language, and posture. We did a little, you know what speed dating is. You guys come from the same time I did. I never took part in that. That would have benefited me if I did. But anyways, I had tables set up in my room, and so they started out the interviewing process kind of going through speed dating. And they would hop from table to table. They have to interview the person across from them, and they have to be interviewed from the person across from them. I gave them five minutes, then boom, it's time to move, let's go. We just keep going back and forth. And it was interesting to see how they went from table one all the way to their fifth table, how much they improved on things like that because they were getting exposed to that.
Because you're teaching them something that some of them don't get at home, which is always, you know, one of those adverse effects to a lot of kids. And they don't really understand the importance of knowing certain things. As a matter of fact, I have one of the big four CPA firms that want to come to your class and talk to them about financial literacy. So, and they would be glad to come to your class. Because they know how important, and his thing is, that you make a dollar, but everybody's spending two dollars. So they want to kind of focus on those things relative to, like at the ninth grade, where they're focusing on financial literacy. So there are people that's out there that's willing to provide those services, and it's free of charge. So we'll get with you guys. As a matter of fact, I would like to come and audit yours to just see how.
And we had Jake Bennett come last year and do financial literacy with us. That was kind of fun because I coached him. It was really cool to kind of see him come in that realm, be an adult and go out and be functional. And come in and talk to kids, because that's not for everybody. But the fact that he speaks on financial literacy and stuff like that. We go through this whole process of going through job interviews and all that, and then we just pretend like they got hired, which is not reality, right? But they got hired, and we go, alright, this is your base salary. We divide that by twelve months. We hold out taxes. And they literally go through an entire unit of budgeting and how to spend that money efficiently. It's unique to see how they buy cars because they want the Ford Mustang. The Honda Civic is the better option for them to get going. Gil Patrick's gonna find that out pretty soon. If Lane can find the jacked-up truck on there, he probably will. Straight knives. And so they go, and they, and they spend money. And we even go to the grocery store. Max Fresh Market has always taken upon them to allow us to come in. We give our kids a clipboard. They have a grocery budget that fits what they make for a year. And they have to go around and highlight the items that they're gonna purchase, and not only buy them metaphorically, but they also have to defend why they purchased them. They figure out how much a gallon of milk costs. So we all know how that goes, right? So, thank you, guys. I appreciate you all.
Hi, I'm Stacy. This is my first year doing JAG, so there's been a very big learning curve, but I have enjoyed it so much getting to be in a different class setting. I've been in multiple class settings, and this one is completely different for me, and it has been really fun. With high school students, catching attention is a lot different than an elementary class or junior high class. And so we've been focusing a lot, especially right before we got out for Christmas, on learning how to do gross pay. And they got so frustrated, why do I have to know this? I said, because you want to know how much somebody's gonna pay you. And they couldn't get it through their head that not everybody is honest and truthful. Well, my boss is just gonna do it for me, so I don't need to know how to do this. But we have kicking and screaming, we're learning how to do it to do it correctly so they know. We have been able to have, at this point, we just had our third guest speaker. He came on Tuesday, Mr. Gerald Wilson. He is a recruiter for the Lincoln Tech out of Nashville, which is together with a Nashville Auto Diesel Academy. And he's a recruiter. His office is out of Shreveport. So he came in on Thursday and spoke to my kids about the different classes that they offer. And talked about, what I found the most interesting is, he gave a statistic that told the number of jobs that each of these areas were gonna need in Louisiana by the year 2030. And he broke it down to them and said that if you go through this program and you add this, you're gonna add this much more to your pay at the end. So I've already emailed him again and said, is there any way I can get those statistics in that slide so that way I can share that every year with my kids? Because I thought it was very interesting. And lots of great information from him. And he's got some interviews set up with some of our students, just kind of talk with them. So I thought that was really great. One of our favorite projects that my students have done, it's called Build a Bridge. And my kids were broken up into groups. They got one hundred popsicle sticks and some Elmer's glue, and they had to build a bridge. Something that was going to be able to have some weight held on it to see if it was gonna stand up. And I will say, I was very impressed. I was very surprised because my group of boys that I thought they just struggle in some other areas, they knocked it out of the park. Not only did they build a bridge that I could stack, a stack of books, they built a bridge out of popsicle sticks and Elmer's glue that somebody could stand on. And they were amazed, and I wasn't, not gonna lie. I was like, are you really standing on that or are they holding you up? And I, Prem kind of showed me up. I didn't have my pictures, but I have some in my yearbook that'll be in the yearbook, which will have a kid standing on it. And I was just, it was, I was blown away. I was so impressed with them. And I told them, I said, I can't even begin to. Their thought process was so different of the different classes. I mean, like, they immediately said, okay, this is what we've got to do, and this is what we're gonna do. And so they did wonderful with it. We've had the opportunity to visit the Monroe campus of Delta and got to take a tour of it along with our transitions class with Ms. Michelle Lindsay. We are in the process of scheduling a trip to the West Monroe campus of Delta because that's where a lot of my students are interested in the electrician, the welding, the heavy equipment operator, and carpentry, and they emphasize that, that area. So we are in the process of getting that one together. We have had guest speakers that came in. You were talking about job interviews. I had a former teacher who taught entrepreneurship at Juneau High School that came in and talked to my students about interviewing, how to dress for interviews, how to put your best foot forward in an interview, of what you should say, shouldn't say, how you should dress, how you should not dress. And, you know, she, we laughed at one of the statistics. She told that she found us a, a clip pic, a graphic, that employers said people brought their parents in with them on job interviews. And my kids thought that was the funniest thing, but that statistic was there. And like, I didn't even realize that. And so we talked a lot about that in the days after that. Today, we started talking about resume writing because it's a major component in one of our JAG competencies, is being able to create a resume. And for my high school students, it's something that goes in their JAG portfolio that will be checked by the state. So we have begun that process today. We were actually gonna work on our, writing our resume tomorrow. But today, we learned about the different components that go in it, what types of activities should and shouldn't be placed in a resume. And so that was very informative for them and myself with just some of the feedback of different ideas in those things, so.
Sounds great.
Tell me how the JAG program has benefited your school in your own words.
I mean, it's, it's great because it includes a lot of kids that get involved in activities and to do things that they would not ordinarily do. So.
It gives them confidence.
It does because a lot of times, you know, you go to the academics, and most kids aren't as strong as academics. It gives them confidence to do things outside that they would not do. So they might go and volunteer somewhere that even if they're made to do it through JAG, like until they enjoy doing it, and they will continue to do it. You hope that they continue to do that even though they're not in the class. So it just gives them the opportunity. Those kids that wouldn't, that aren't just made to follow an academic track, they may not be in sports. They may not be as strong as that they have, that opportunity. So I think it just helps in that area.
Yeah, I think it teaches a lot of life lessons. I think that it teaches team building, cooperative learning with each other and learning each other. Like she was talking about, when they build the bridge, they have to work together. And just like we all have to work together as a team in a building and get things done, they're learning that through that cooperative learning. It also teaches them life skills, like the job interviews, but also other things. Like they put together our picnic tables outside. They build a Gaga pit, so we have some type of large project for them each year. But they love to volunteer and help with different things that Justin takes them to go to, like the reindeer games. They went to the reindeer games. They go to the preschool, and they read to them or volunteer or pick up trash, and they absolutely love doing those things. And so building community service into their portfolio and just becoming a better person. And I, when we, when I first started there ten years ago, it was pretty difficult to get people to want to be in JAG. And now there's like a waiting list because Coach Prem is so amazing that they all want to be in his class. And so, you know, we get to have some really good conversations about how can it help kids. But Justin does, doesn't get enough credit because he actually goes in on his free period and goes in and helps kids and tutors them in math because he's trying to help them. So even when he's not even supposed to be teaching, he's actually. So even when he's not even supposed to be teaching, he's actually, um, helping kids.
The reason why I ask that because I may not be sitting here, but if this program is ever on the chopping block, I want them to know that this is a program that is beneficial to these particular students. You guys would like for them to be able to support this loud and clear because some of these programs, to my understanding, with the new administration coming in, there may be some cuts that may come down. And if this is beneficial here, if we have to find the money, this is a program that we need. So that's the reason why I ask, but I want you guys to be able to tell them exactly why, you know, it was important. So it wasn't an aha moment, I just wanted you to tell it from your own version.
Baron, actually, the school board helps to fund this program. They do not send us enough money.
Really?
No. So whether you know it or not, you all help me with salaries, benefits, supplies. Nikki and Nicki are present.
On that note, I'm talking about the school board as well. That, on that note, I'm talking about the school board, whoever's funding it. What I'm saying is that it's not something that needs to be, it needs to be strongly considered not to be, uh, given away, especially if it's happened, uh, the kids that are oftentimes maybe forgotten about or they're coming from this side, they're not the well-known kid, they're not the most popular, they can get involved. And they, because most of those kids I see now, they go off and be more productive than, you know, some of the, those who are, you know, come from the, that side of the fence.
Some of the things they're teaching, I think they'd be beneficial for all of them.
Right.
I think the big thing is us blending all those kids together has been, because I, I see, I see kids that are, I mean, I would say, you just think in terms of the starting quarterback. And then I have a kid that's in my class, I don't think he has anybody that talks to him outside of the classroom normally. They sit together, they do all their projects together, and so, uh, there's a lasting friendship they're gonna have forever.
Yeah, I think it's straight A students that didn't have the knowledge that you're teaching them, like going to the grocery store and figuring out the budgets and stuff, they all need that.
That's true, and I can speak, Justin's had my nephews. And he's had a rough go the last few years. And Justin wasn't just a teacher, he was there for him. And he's gone above and beyond than what he had to do. Um, and I could never thank him enough for that. And he's the only kid, and now I know why, he's the only one of my three that thanks me after we go grocery shopping.
Do you guys remember when you couldn't get them real to say one minute?
Well, I'm, I am truly thankful.
I appreciate that.
It's that life lesson it is that everybody wants their kids to have. You just gotta teach them cursive writing now.
Actually, cursive's the only handwriting I can, you can actually read that I write. You've seen my, I mean, my print is terrible.
We actually did that with my high school students in their time packets that we did last, right before Christmas. They had to endorse a check and it blew their mind. And they're like, can I just print my name? I was like, no. Okay, so let's review how to do a S, how do you, and some of them did great to get their first name and they weren't even gonna attempt their second, so.
First letter, line.
And Mr. Cottrell, I'm just gonna offer a unanimous, uh, resolution commended, and Kayla, you can add whatever words you want on top. Just make sure you, uh, include all of those that involve principal, uh, JAG instructor, uh, whoever that needs to be there, just congratulate them and maybe give them a copper, I don't know.
I will. All in favor?
Thank you all so much, I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
I'm gonna help out enough crying babies at home here.
Alright, before we go to item L, I want to thank the board and all the teachers and everybody for maybe allowing me to be president the last, how many ever years it's been, I really don't even know. But I'm off that down this year, because then somebody else can handle it. But, alright, with that, item L is motion to the late board president for one year term beginning January ninth, twenty twenty five. I'll make the motion that we, that Randy.
I'll second.
Alright, everybody in favor?
Yes.
Alright, item G is motion to the late board vice president for one year term beginning January ninth, twenty twenty five. Anybody?
Well, since Baron's been trying to push me to the president, well, for a while now, I will, if.
I'll nominate Red with the vice president.
I will step up.
Alright, alright. Item H, item H, want to call our president, do more than any.
Just stay as he of the, just walk. Just stay as he of the Randy and walk.
You're on personnel, right? Randy.
No, I'm not on policy.
You're on policy.
Not on, not on policy. Yeah, this is a deal in the business.
So Randy, you're gonna have to come off executive.
Yeah, this is a deal in the business.
So Randy, you're gonna have to come off executive.
Wait. I can't, I don't have to. I was on there when I was the president. He's, he's, he's probably the most valuable in money here. Oh, I say that, we got bankers here too, so maybe not.
Well, if there's anybody on that wants to be on a committee.
But I would like to stay on anything.
Yeah, you can.
Well, if there's anybody on that wants to be on a committee, now is.
Well, I ain't gonna go against him, but I would tell you to talk with him. And if he's okay with it, maybe he wanna be on a, is he on executive? I'm here so you know me.
He's in transportation.
Well, I ain't gonna go against him, but I mean, I would tell you to talk with him.
If he would be willing.
Just switch, just switch, just switch Maria from, from, uh, from transportation to, uh, I mean, from building and ground and then put. Yeah, just switch, just, just switch, just switch Maria from, from, uh,
He struggles, he struggles to get here during the day because of his, his.
Yeah, but still, because he's a member of the, giving the privilege to say, yeah, maybe.
We can ask.
We can ask, yeah.
I'm not saying it's gonna be a problem, but just to give him the.
Right.
I think he'll be okay with it.
Because Maria, I, I wouldn't be fucked.
He struggles, he struggles to get here during the day because of his.
We're gonna wait an hour, we're gonna.
Yeah, but, but still, because he's a member of the, I would give him the privilege to say, yeah, maybe.
We can ask.
I'm not saying it's gonna be a problem, it's just to give him the. Because Maria, I, I would, Randy, if you would just reach out the vote, since you're the president now, so. You know, just, uh.
Hey, the mayor swapped to the president.
Yes, ma'am.
You do, look at you. Yes, thank you.
He's taking grandbaby time, aren't you?
So can they approve pending conversation? Here, we do appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
He's taking grandbaby time, aren't you?
That's, that's the only thing we're talking about changing anyway. Yeah.
So can they approve pending conversation?
Yeah, all you gotta do tonight is approve that president, vice president, committee can be selected by someone else.
Can we give, I'll check it, can we give you mine? That's the only thing we're talking about changing.
You can't be moving over that, man.
Yeah. Alright, motion to the, can we give it for her? Can we give you mine? Committee is checking it out. Alright. Excellent, receiving update.
You can't be moving over that, regarding the cellphone policy.
It's, it's going well. Um, it's much better we likely won the policy the way that it is because it's, um, it's clear, it's precise, um, it's consistent.
Excellent, receiving update with the principals regarding the cellphone policy.
It's going well. Uh, we have a light, we have less siblings, it's going well. Um, it's much better we're likely won the policy the way that it is. We don't have phones hanging out back pockets. There's not phone, we don't walk in the classroom, nobody takes a phone. With teenagers in the high school, you don't have it, it's going well, it's supposed to be on campus, so. Um, the teachers are enjoying, yeah, less siblings, instead of having to, you know, wander here. And, um, phones hanging out back pockets, there's not.
And our parents voted to it. Our parents voted to it, we.
I mean, we have, I mean, we have, uh, it's supposed to be on campus, so. I would say ninety-nine percent of the parents voting, not having to, okay, the policy that we have is, you know, we have one parent, one mother, I'll give her, save them a bag. The work policy.
Have you found anything that makes you withdraw?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have. It's, it's working. I would say ninety-nine. I guess some of the parents are like, yeah. Because it gives the teachers, you know, they feel like it gives them the right to say, you're not supposed to have that, and you know.
Have you had any instances of, um, people, kids using their phones?
I guess some of the parents are like, yeah. I feel like it gives them the right. I haven't had anything major at school, we've had things that.
Have you had any instances of, um, people, kids using their phones?
That's what it's wrong, I had them last year, people have Snapchat or all those things. We, we only have a few of the ones, but as teachers see my bills, they can't even turn them in. And they would bring them back to school. At school, we've had things that.
So that has to mention.
That has, yes.
Which was a major problem that you guys were having in Carroll from the weekend.
That's what it's wrong, I had them last year, people have Snapchat or all those things. So they're showing videos, they bring them in, they're not supposed to have it, so they just don't. We haven't had anything, um, that they were like that.
So that has to mention. Which was a major problem that you guys were having in Carroll from the weekend.
In class, like they were, because they were waiting every five minutes or waiting. They were having, because they know they're supposed to be there showing videos. If they bring them in, they're not supposed to have it, so they just want that. We haven't had anything, um, major, that's a better. That's a great one. Students aren't distracted. In class, like they were, because they were waiting every five minutes or five minutes. They were, um, everybody was just kind of working together. We had substitutions and teachers, they were supposed to be there for it. So we had some substitutions, that was not happening. They say a kid, they're calling, hanging out, you know, they like, they get away with it. My friends, I own a social media, her friends, they have, they, they take them, you know, they call us, everybody's just kind of working together. We'll get a few, we'll get some substitutions, but.
But that's expected.
Yes.
So Randy, I, I would think that's what we want to get. Especially when we started this because it was uncertain whether we needed to go on to the total ban. So if it's working, uh, I think maybe, uh, may Jim kind of give us a forward. That's expected, we need to just stay over there, we can do that otherwise, if we don't do anything else, that's what we want to get. Especially when we started this because it was uncertain whether we needed to go on to the total ban. So if it's working, uh, I think maybe, uh, may Jim kind of give us a forward. If we need to just stay over there. Have the majority of your teachers borrow into that.
If they have it, they'll call it out. If they don't, some of them don't have two bags, um, because from the, they see them in class. And they'll fix those, and they'll, okay, so. And they'll put them back.
Have the majority of your, uh, teachers borrow into that.
I haven't had, they'll give it to them, I might take them themselves, because they do it myself, yeah. If they have it, they'll call us, if they don't, some of them don't have two bags.
Help it down, is in the junior high?
We've only had one incident, like, with a cell phone call all year. And that was actually this week, it was, was a new student. That's it, yeah. We, we collect them at the door, we have these little boxes, everybody has their number and their color and. You know, it was a lot, um, to, it was only, it was a lot and it's a process now, but, um. And that was actually this week.
I'm gonna speak for me, just let you, your family to know that.
That's it, yeah. We, we collect them at the door, we have these little boxes, everybody has their number and their color and. You know, it was a lot to. It was, it was a lot and it's a process now, but, um.
For me, being the policy.
It's been going on.
You know, chairman, I'm gonna speak for me, just. That's a lot because I've seen it for third or fourth year. I'm proud of that, it's a big difference. So we're at now, and they can focus more on, I'm happy, you know, because I was expecting the class more. Because it was, you know, it was, so I congratulate all of you guys, especially the teachers, the chairman frontline. That's a lot because I've seen it for the third or fourth year. I don't see now, it's a big difference. Let's just wait to see who we at now.
You know, the kids are just learning the process, they can.
I'm happy because I was expecting to have more, of issue than what we had, so.
It's a process.
You know, all of you guys, especially the teachers, the ones who are frontline, have to deal with this. And if it's going this way, I don't see no issue other than, let's just wait to do what. Well, I mean, that's all you expect. Good job, Katie and, uh.
Those are pluses, when they check out, right?
Elementary, any?
We've only had, I mean, we have, probably. They're students that are used to it every day. Um, they, they will stick to pluses, they.
Well, I mean, that's all you expect.
Who knows?
Good job, Katie and, uh, Alain in Francis.
Elementary, any? We only have, I mean, we have, and that, I mean, the parents will take it, I mean.
Really? Good.
Um, I mean, because I think once you set the tone and expectation, everybody, you miss by a tip
because if you don't, you're just gonna cause more issues for yourself. So that's good, congratulations on you and your excitement. You think that's great?
I don't think I have any infractions for. Hey, one kid, the only thing you're gonna catch them with is mama's old phone that doesn't work anymore. They think they're cool, so. No, I don't, no. I haven't had any infractions, we have about. Hey, one kid, the only thing you're gonna catch them with is mama's old phone that doesn't work anymore. They think they're cool, so. I haven't had any infractions, we have about five kids that didn't find their phone in the school. We haven't had any issues. I have had one issue. All respectfully called and said, I told my child to bring their phone. And, uh, it was like one of those little boy when he got off the bus and he ran straight. Tachometer type watches and, um, but it took pictures. And when I called her mama, she said, I told her not to take it. I have, you gonna keep it till May, now, part watch. That was a third grader. So we kept her little watch and she was not thrilled about that, she had just gotten them. But her mother and I talked about it, when I called her mama, she said, I told her not to take it. You gonna keep it till May, now. That was a third grader moment. So we kept her little watch and she was not thrilled about that, she had just gotten them. But her mother and I talked about it.
And I think this proves that, even though we all have differences of opinions, we were flexible because we could not be talking about this at all, we wouldn't have it. So I think that goes to show the decision that we had to make because we were considering it. Total ban, and we considered that, and I think this proves that we're just doing something just to make it. Punishment or hardship to the kid, we're actually trying to make it better for the kids to succeed inside the classroom. So that's all, I think that goes to show that in the program and the policy. At least, and you just made it, ear was being said. And we consider that, that's not that we're just doing something just to. The punishment or hardship to the kid, we're actually trying to make it better for the kids to succeed inside the classroom.
I'm Jay, consider approval of revision of calendar, February seventh, twenty twenty five, half day for students to stay.
Nick, is that what you said? It is, I, I texted y'all all about it. And we had it built in as a half day. And the more that you, you learn with your walkthroughs and with your conversations with teachers and what their professional abilities are, we did not see that there was gonna be a way we could fit it in. It is, I texted y'all all about it, and we had it built in as a half day. And the more that you learn with the walkthroughs and half day for students and that way what their professional development things are, we did not see that there was gonna be a way. A lot of times we like to go over the, um, the year surveys, the teachers get in about how they were. And I thought, you know what, let's, let's see if we can do that, give the surveys for the team building activity. And that way, because that's what the teachers are really loving about that full day, professional development day. But it also allowed us, you know, to put in about three year surveys of teachers. We're seeing in our walkthroughs, and we didn't want to take away the time for, for doing the surveys and for the team building. So I just ask that you, um, revise the calendars to make that a virtual half day for students. And it will continue to be just a full workday for teachers. And stay in all staff, and stay in all staff.
I make a motion, we approve, I make a motion on, we were set to a full day. We were set to a full day.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item K. Consider approval of a one-time stipend in twenty twenty-five for maintenance personnel, George Duncan.
Consider approval of a one-time stipend in twenty twenty-five for maintenance personnel, George Duncan, his own. When, when do we start this? Five, six, seven, eight, ten years ago?
Been here twelve.
What, what do we start this? Have we considered five, six, seven, eight, ten years ago?
Been a while.
What is this?
Because if they get loops nowadays, they take it all.
At, at one time, there were three employees, and it was two fifty then, also, it's dropped down to two.
Because if they get loops nowadays? They, what can we, yeah.
They're grossly overpaid, I feel like we need a raise.
Yeah, that's what, I, I got a number, but I wanna say, what, what can we afford?
Also, it's dropped down to two.
I wanna put you on the spot. Does it need to be done tonight? Because I mean, what can we afford?
Well, okay, what, they're grossly overpaid.
I would, I was gonna say, I, I, I got a number, but I wanna say, what, what can we afford?
So somebody wants to make a motion?
See, I don't wanna be the catch hell all the time.
All seconded.
All in favor?
I was gonna say five hundred. It's, it's just common sense, everything's going up, and two fifty don't last.
It doesn't, yeah, not much, yeah.
Good, motion on that?
See, I don't wanna be the one to catch hell all the time. Now we're. Sit there, you gonna leave me there.
So now we're moving to eleven?
Yeah.
Consider adopting a resolution declaring January as school board recognition month?
They not blame you.
But well, hold on. L S B A sends out a guy.
Sit there, you gonna leave me there.
So now we're moving to eleven?
Some social media out.
Consider adopting a resolution declaring January as school board recognition month?
Basically, just wanna recognize January in the January, our board members, and, um, the, um, L S B A sends out their packet and policies, and throws decisions, and they turn in something for the newspapers, and students live every day. Be getting some social media out, um, or push out, shout outs, for board members, but basically, I just wanna recognize January in the January, our board members, and the work that you do.
That way, it's just every year, you don't have to keep coming back.
Making policies and making decisions on, um, on student slides every day. So just declare this January, just every year, yes, sounds good.
That's one less for the resolution, Katie.
Kaylee's not upset.
One less for you. I can't get you a raid, like, get you a resolution.
I get, I'm saving paper, we're saving money.
All right. Financial update.
Uh, let's see, uh.
Well, that's still now.
You got four pages in front of you, uh, first page is general term. Uh, the important column, the column A, favorable and unfavorable. The brackets does not mean that it went down, it just means the unfavorable varies. So obviously, uh, M F P is down a hundred seventy-two thousand, that's the factor. Other sources of funds, the third line, that's indirect costs, that's down, because we have less, as our money, well, we have no extra money as compared with the year last year. And then towards the bottom, the bottom line, we're three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars worse off than we were last year. That's largely within expectations, because our, last year, I think we had a two hundred thousand dollar projected deficit, this year it was nine hundred. So that, that's in line. Uh, good, the second page is on sales tax. Uh, the noteworthy line, the columns compare, and, uh, this column C, at the very bottom, six fifty-one, and column F, four forty-seven. That's how far ahead we are this year versus last year. Even though we've not collected, uh, as much in sales tax, we did not pay out that Christmas payment of, of eight fifty, as we did last year. So that is a savings that we didn't have, that we have this year that we didn't have last year. So that offsets the sales tax decrease. Uh, now that, I mean, I know we've talked about maybe paying it out, paying out something in springs.
I was hoping that our sales tax would go up, so we could give an extra check in the spring, so, we just, we just need the sales tax to be like that.
But I, I thought we always looked at, even if we couldn't give the eight fifty, we can consider something else less than that.
We can do whatever, so, I mean, that, that's the board decision on that one, the way the resolution's with. Uh, page three, lunch fund, again, very bottom, we're a hundred twenty-two thousand ahead this year, compared to a hundred twenty-four last year. So that's running about the same. That does not mean we'll, we'll finish in the black, uh, we'll probably finish about like what we did last year, with about a hundred thousand dollar deficit. And, uh, the big thing on that is, in prior years, we had been contributing two hundred thousand from the general fund to the lunch fund, and then we decreased it, uh, whenever we went through COVID years, and, uh, Sandra had extra money. So at some point, we'll probably have to pump it back up to two hundred thousand dollars, that's not this year. Then maintenance fund, again, the bottom line, we're right at even with last year, so, we're, maintenance fund is kind of a shining star. So, um, that's all I got.
Dana, you wanna share the good news about the audit? I know you thanked it all of us, but for the public to hear.
We're waiting for the legislative office to go through all the, multiple, uh, audit files, uh, audit reports to get released. But, uh, we, we have no findings on the audit, no exceptions on the, uh, agreed upon procedures, except for one on, one of the Vessys, which was trivial. Uh, so, all in all, good, so.
That is a testament to that business department, because they are thorough and on top of.
I, I mean, and I think I put in the post that Carla and Jen probably touched ninety percent of the transactions. You know, you can't get, get the audit out the door with a lot of problems. So, I, I, I mean, everything's posted pretty much right the first time, I, I mean, I'm sure there's one or two things that we've done wrong, but overall, we're in good shape. On the audit, on the audit.
Hey, Mr. President, just, uh, also, unanimous resolution come in in the finance department for, uh, Kayla, you can word it how you want to word it, but if it can be unanimous. Well, David, I mean, it's, you know, we laugh about it, but that's the most important aspect of the school system. And, uh, I, I take it personally, because that's why we're here, which is to make sure that the finances are available, and make sure that we elect a superintendent. Other than that, we have no jurisdiction to do anything, so, I think if you're doing a good job, you should be acknowledged, and, uh, that's a hell of a, you know, a hell of a hard job that you guys are doing.
We're very happy.
And, uh, I just think you need to, you need to pat on your back now, uh, because when it get, you know, when hell started burning, you'll, you'll hear all this other stuff like that.
So I just want to make. I don't want it to be in Baton Rouge, trying to defend something else, whenever we have bad audits.
Right.
I mean, it's hard to have any credibility.
Well, we're in your corner, bro.
All right, so, we appreciate that, so, thank you all.
All right, superintendents, now, district leaders, update.
I'll start with Monica. Um, we, you know, came back this week, uh, attendance has been good, we, Mrs. Khan has really been pushing for the school leaders, um, up their attendance. We're looking at personnel and kids, you know, what we can do to, to build those up. Um, one of the things with early childhood is, of course, they're not mandatory programs, and a lot of times, parents look at it that way, but if they don't start them, that's, that's the habits they're gonna, you know, follow. So we're really trying to, um, talk to parents and push that. We had three or four start this week at Kelly, and I think three or four more, I'm the queue this week, so that's picking up a little bit. Of course, these are kids just turning three, so they'll be back again next year, you know, um, we hate for them to repeat it, but it's, sometimes it's good for them, it's, sometimes it's what they need. So, um, it's better for them to be there than at home or, you know, somewhere else, so, um, we're excited about that, um, because the numbers have been down there. So we're excited and gonna keep pushing to try to grow that on up, where they'll be ready to move up next year.
How many children are down, uh, at the?
There were sixty-seven before Christmas, like, two had moved, were, were moving, not coming back, and we, we were both three, so that would be, set, because one of the two came back, left came back. So it'd be seventy-three, with the three more coming, would be like up to seventy-six, I, I, we're pushing eighty. I think by the next, by the end of the month, we'd be at eighty.
How many, can you, um, how is down there?
Eighty-five. With the, with the question.
So Monica, do rural areas experience the same problem as some of the larger metropolitan areas with regards to kids coming early? Are there incentives out there that other people use, and that we might can use, or it's just one of those things?
It, it's, it's just one of those things, and one thing that we offer, that some of the rural areas started to do is the transportation.
Really?
We don't do house to house, we do the pickup points, but even in some of your larger urban areas, they don't, they don't offer the transportation, they've got to get them there. So in some cases, that might mean you get into a center across town that you've got to try to get to, so, I think we're all facing those same things, um, it, with attendance, with enrollment, everything, um.
Do we need to do media blitz, uh, I mean, is it anything else that we can do that you know of?
We talked about that, and just putting that word out there and continuing to do it, um, a lot of it's just getting the parents, um, open to it, to bring their face.
I mean, it's, it's, it's been proven that the earlier they get in school, the better they perform.
Right.
And if that's the norm, I just think more effort needs to be put into that, not from you guys, just in general, that, you know, if a parent's got a two or three-year-old kid, the best thing to do is, I mean, we know you hate to, you know, send them, but in the long run, it's gonna be better. Especially if another kid is gonna start out quicker than you, and you, you coming in a year later.
Well, and when we look at our literacy scores and things like that, you've got these kids coming in, and they're, you would think with all the technology and things, that kids are coming in at a higher level, and it's really, it's the opposite, they're coming in lower and lower and lower. And just like you said, it's, it's, it's across the board, it doesn't matter the race, the economic level, whatever, there, it's just, they're not getting the same kind of exposure at home, they're not getting read to, they're not getting the vocabulary, they're getting handed a tablet, for whatever reason. And, and I, it may be educational things are doing on there, but that screen time, it's been shot, uh, Cynthia Plack sent me a thing today, and it was talking about young children and screen time, and it increasing behaviors, you know, negative behaviors, and it's not helping with their, um, with their literacy and things. So, I think the more that we can, um, you know, instill in our parents, that's one of the things, we've looked at some, not, not restructuring, but just the way our, some of our early childhood leaders and some things we're doing with our family, um, involvement, family services. Trying to do more, um, outreach sort of, but just education with families, and what's best for kids, and I mean, you see it now, I mean, our little grandbaby's four months old, and he's already, because he sees phones, when he sees one, he's, he's looking at it. And even if it's FaceTime, and he's seeing a face, but they just, they're drawn to it.
Right.
They, um, and so they, e- even, um, sometimes with our kids' behaviors, it's so easy for a teacher, if they can hand them a tablet, it stops it, you know, but we've got to get them away from that, because if they move on through the system, they, they can't, you know, be tied to that.
So, so Nick, and maybe we need to get, with a clergy, businessmen, uh, business people, and kind of stress to them, if they can talk to their employees about, uh, you know, maybe, you know, not maybe an incentive, but something by way of letting them know that it's, it's in the best interest of them down the road. Uh, I think maybe a conversation or a communication between, you know, all these entities, maybe it can kind of spark a fire to where people will start considering, because if they don't know, they don't know. And if they don't know that just the, the statistics say that, if you send your kid to school at three versus sitting at four, here are some of the results, here are some of the factual information, maybe that'll give them a boost, I don't know, I'm just kind of creative, creatively thinking, but I, I think at least we need to have a conversation with those people, yeah.
All right.
Maybe give them some caution, don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, and maybe even just knowing who, who has kids who are out there that we could reach out to.
Right.
And say, hey, we'd love for you to come.
Well, Ashley Roberts is the best about seeing people in the grocery store, the dollar store, and they have a policy, you buy it, you know.
And that's good.
She just sent her to the dollar stores.
So Nick, it's not a requirement that they go at three, right?
No, no.
Our four are.
It's not a requirement until they get to kindergarten.
It is a real difference when they go.
But it's, it's, it's what I'm saying, if, if you know that the statistic says that it works, why, why not make that, I'm not gonna say mandatory, but maybe you need to consider.
So like, when they do the stipend, and like, how it's there, well, their early childhood teachers aren't included, it's because the, those programs aren't in the M F P.
Right.
If they make it required, they're gonna have to include that in the end.
Okay, so.
I got you. Follow the dollar.
Thank you, Monica, Saber, you got a thing?
I do not, everything's going well.
Good deal, all right. Ms. Val?
Well, happy to meet you there, everybody. I have nothing to deny, believe it or not, but, um, glad to be here.
Good deal.
Good deal.
Good deal. Michael?
Um, I have to say that after being in the I T department, what, four years now, this is probably the smoothest start I think we've ever had coming back out of the holidays. We've had four issues, and all four of them were printers, so, um, I wanna say that it's actually running smoothly, uh, and, and that's down to students not having their cell phones, and us not getting flagged for inappropriate activity on the Wi-Fi.
So Mike, are you able to see if you're getting any more hits of people using?
Oh, yeah, it's way down, way down.
So we do have proof that it's working, the policy?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, right now, we're working on making sure Chromebooks are ready, Coach Abby's got a stack that she's been working on, so we're looking at a couple of months ahead, testing time. So we're working on making sure that the teachers will have good laptops, and the students will have Chromebooks, so that's our main focus for now.
Good job.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Uh, the high school switched over to the second semester, and Ms. Hillstead is doing a really good job, she's recruited in seven new students since we came back Tuesday, so, looking forward, hold on to them till February first, we get that M F P, buddy.
Is that a team?
Well, we were just sitting here, she's had five, she's had two, and she's had one new student, um, so we hit the ground running, um, literally, uh, this week, and, uh, everything just kept rolling, like Michael said, and we just kept moving forward. Uh, you know, you worry after being off, you know, for that extended time, you think, oh, gosh, have we forgotten that we needed to do this, this, and this? But we had district meetings at each school this week, and these ladies have, they have it slacked up, they hit the ground running, and, uh, we've had middle of the year data meetings, and I'm sure Ms. Greer will present, um, that to the board, um, those have been great. Uh, teachers are really digging into their data, and, um, on how to improve instruction, and how to improve for students, and these ladies have plans already made on how to improve literacy scores and math scores, and so, they're rocking and rolling.
Good deal, with the ground running.
Superintendent?
All right, well, tomorrow's a weather day, continuous learning, so, um, the principals and teachers all sent home packets, there is an online availability, and then also the paper packet to go home, um, hate to lose an instructional day. Um, looks like the weather's gonna be fine for us, but when all this surrounding parishes let out, and then you've got employees traveling from out of the parish, it just, um, is the safest thing to do, to make sure that you, um, keep everybody safe, and we don't necessarily have enough subs to cover all those classrooms of people who can't get to work. So we made that, um, that decision today, to do that. Um, one thing I wanted to shout out, just the robotics team, um, if you remember last year at this time, we were recognizing, but they have, um, placed again at the junior high robotics team, and is going down to New Orleans, um, the twenty-sixth of January, to compete again, so we're excited about that program. Um, I have on here, I'll go back to you, but, um, Monica mentioned attendance, and it made me think, y'all should have received an email from L D O E, uh, Monday, I believe, evening, about the attendance, uh, key priority. And so Angela and I talked about that, and of course, they, they are, and I hope that y'all are seeing, we're pushing out those attendance, just trying to improve those attendance rates for students, and at the same time, for teachers as well, and just, um, we can't teach kids if they're not here. And so, we, we fight the truancy battle with those who are unexcused, but we're also fighting the battle with those who are excused, who are now called chronically absent. So whether or not you have a doctor's excuse, if you're not in class, you're not learning, um, regardless of whether you have a doctor's excuse or not, so we're just trying to get kids in classes, um, so big push on attendance. So any questions about that email that y'all received, just let me know.
Well, Nick, did you, did you change my email, because I didn't get it, Kaylee, I know you, I had you check it during Thanksgiving, because I, I don't use an email, it don't.
And they didn't send it to your new one?
I got it, so I'll forward it to you, too, um, but.
Yeah, and they actually responded to me, and it took forever, and said, uh, you know, what do you need, but I don't know if they ever, um, said, okay, I'll change it, so.
Beginning to think, y'all excluding me now.
No.
Sure, ain't intention, Kaylee?
I, I, I could forward it to you tomorrow, if it's in there.
I will forward it to you tonight, yeah, because they send it out to superintendents at the same time they send it out to y'all.
You know I'm playing with you.
It's a surprise to us, too, so, anyway.
Okay, so back to Kaylee, with conference.
I was just gonna say that I did get y'all.
I was just gonna say that I did get y'all registered for the conference in February, I got your confirmation numbers for the uh, hotel reservations, but it's still well over a month away. So once we get through probably the February meeting, I'll give y'all all that, um. And then that's it, y'all, yeah, just wanna give y'all an update on that.
Where's it at, I forget?
Uh, it's, I believe it's in Lake Charles, the Golden Nugget, I've been emailing back and forth to them.
Yeah, I like it there because you don't have to leave.
You don't have to look into everything in one location, yeah.
So you're you'll reset all that.
Okay, the uh, any comments from board members on anything?
Yeah, Randy, go ahead.
I'd like to say thank you to Coach Abby and them for doing the tournament, um, reception, the ones that were there, we're real appreciative, so I'd like to say thank you to them for the effort they put forward.
Well, Melinda, I'm gonna say thank you. For helping me, and I wanna know why you guys were not there because.
I was all the time.
We uh, we we were looking for y'all.
Yeah, I was.
But uh, it turned out to be good.
I'm glad.
It was something good for the community, uh, Mr. Turner uh, was one hundred percent behind it, uh, I think it made Ms. Holliday uh, just elated to be considered years down the road when, you know, nobody thought she even existed. Uh, the other two individuals were not there, but uh, Melinda did uh, a lot, and I just wanna say thank you for what you did. And having the foresight, getting on the board to know that that was something that needed to happen, not just for the school, but the community as a whole.
Well, I'm hoping we can get Pam more involved with us, I'm hoping Pam, please come help. Gay said that she would like to come run some basketball counts and I think it would be neat just to have extra experience, somebody different there.
Cause we need some help.
I think I missed it, yeah.
Yeah.
It was fun, it was fun to hear the stories from all of the players, you know, it was, it was a fun afternoon.
It was really impressive because we just, you know, I was like, I don't know what to put on tables and and Coach Tammy Davis is what I'm gonna call her, she's like, what about the trophies? And I'm like, okay, so we've kind of messed up the trophy rack. Probably need to go dust it and clean it, whatever, but we did, we set up the state trophies on the one side and then we had like the uh, the women from the sixty fourteen. And then then Pam and them from the seventy-eight and Cynthia Yerby was there, it was good to see her too. But we set those up and it was just really unique and then Gay had stuff just everywhere for different things. And she's a talker.
Yeah.
She is a talker and she could convince anybody to do it.
We learned a lot, so thank y'all for making that happen.
You know, and Nick, uh, you played a role as well, uh, thanks for the communication, uh, keeping Melinda and I aware of everything that was going on. So again, you know, we talk about units, but it's it's always better when you show it, so hats off to you and uh, what you're doing. And uh, hopefully this year, cause I, my days are numbered, I don't know when they're gonna be, but they're numbered, and I may not make it to, you know, these two years, but at some point, I think we've done a great job doing the things that we needed to do. And at the end of the day, I think we all leave her knowing that we're trying to do the right thing. And I'm just happy that we can reach those conclusions because it's been previous boards that, you know, it's hell or I want, so.
We make a good team. And we can get it done without your help. Glad to do it, enjoy it.
Well, anybody, it's Gay return.
Like an ocean.
I'm like emotional.